Good evening, one. Welcome to the Monday much for the council meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman McCloskey.
Here.
Alderman Batty.
Here.
Alderman Strack.
Here.
Alderman Cook.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of innocence to the flag of the United States of America. And to recall that we're just fans, one nation under God, and you deserve all we've ever seen in our lives.
I don't see any public comment unless...
Yeah, come on, you got it.
You got it, sorry, right? Are you... I got it, alright. Actually, my agenda is five A, five E. Consent agenda, is there any items that the council would like to pull for separate consideration? See now, I'm looking for a motion to a five A through five E. Alderman Miller?
I'll make the motion to approve five A and five E, and thank you, Monty, for the gorgeous map.
Alderman Strack, for a second.
Sure moved.
Discussion on these items by council? See now, please call the roll.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Strack, Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Alderman McCloskey.
Yes.
Alderman Batty.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is six A is a Thornton's video gaming. Motion to approve a video gaming license to Thor store three forty-four eight twenty-one oh eight, West Illinois Route one twenty. And if approved, a motion to pass an ordinance amending section four dash six dash eight, subsec A, number of licenses of the city of McHenry code. Can I get a motion second to approve six A as presented?
I'll make a motion.
You make a motion, alright. Second? Alderman McCloskey? Thank you. Discussion on this item by council? Alderman Batty?
When I was looking at the notes, it looked like Crystal Lake and Woodstock did not have gaming in, um, gas stations and truck stops. Was that correct, or you just have not heard back from them?
So, they don't know. I don't know if they have... They didn't respond back to me, so I looked it up myself. So, they don't have what it looks like to be a gas station or truck stops. I hope Crystal Lake or Woodstock has any gas that qualifies as truck stops either. So, that's... I couldn't get that out of them. So, it could... So, I don't know what... I don't know the reasoning they don't. You know, I... No one told their council against it. Maybe nobody applied. I'm sure it's applied, you know, but I can't prove why they don't. Or if they even have a truck stop. Truck stop.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by council? Alderman Miller?
I just want to mention the fact that, uh, we've got Graham's building a gas station on the other side. Uh, his original presentation, he was expecting, uh, video gaming. And I think when we make this vote, uh, I know that staff's a little worried about that, that we would open up, uh, uh, to all the gas station wanting video gaming and all that. But, uh, the thing is, is, uh, look at that. If we're not going to give Thornton's the video gaming tonight, then we'd probably be looking at, uh, doing it across town to Graham either, even though it's not in the agreement specifically that we will give it to him. But I'm sure the intent is that, uh, as he builds that gas station with the, uh, uh, truck stop, which he had, uh, he's not hidden it, that that's what he was going to do. Um, how do we not approve one and approve the other? So, we've got to be consistent. So, I think that if we're not going to approve Thornton's tonight, we wouldn't approve, uh, Graham's, uh, either on the other side of town. So, I think to some extent, we've got to look at it that way, that, uh, either we are going to approve truck stops or we're not. And just like I said, other than anything else, I think, uh, it could be a legality issue later of why we would approve one and not the other. Uh, it's basically the same, uh, same type of development. So, that's all I want.
Thank you. Alderman Santee?
Okay, on page thirty-four in our packet, uh, it's got these five bullet points. Uh, I guess are these requirements? And does this Thornton fill those five requirements regarding amount of gas or diesel fuel that they're selling and, uh, the separate islands? You know, at least a three acre facility?
Yeah, you're talking about the request to have your truck stops. I have their paperwork showing they qualify, and they've already turned it into the state and been a... You know, they've already... I got that paperwork, it's the same stuff they turned into the state and signed off on. So, they... For until they qualify as a truck stop endorsement.
Okay, and so they've fulfilled all of their state requirements? And I think the way this reads is that it still has to come to the local council in regards to, um, we can still vote it out. I mean, we're not... We're not forced in any kind of corner because of they fulfilled their requirements with the state, correct?
I think you're correct. Our ordinance says you will come and get a little gaming license, and the council gets a vote on the local licenses. That's what I believe. Um, we contacted Attorney McGarrett last week about it, just to double check. He said it's up to you guys to decide what you want to do.
Sure, that's my understanding. We will make the final call here. Um, no, I know truck stops are not the same as a gas station. And I know we do have a couple of gas stations outside of town. Do have the gaming licenses because their county, and they allow it. Um, and I could understand that our clerk will probably get numerous phone calls, if not already, for every single station in town making that request. And then the next request might be coming from liquor stores. Um, but I shouldn't expand on that, uh, opinion. But, uh, it's definitely a concern for me in regards to going on this path, even though, um, it's... They have fulfilled their state requirements because we are the final... You know, we get the... We make the final call here, and I just want to make sure that we all understand that. And one more question if I may ask. Do you know the facility that's going to be built on, um, the cornering wood in one twenty, Graham's facility? Um, we have no idea if they're going to fulfill these five bullet points they put in this summary for Thornton's, correct? I mean, we don't know that because we don't... They have to sell gas, right?
Right, they will. They will. They will be considered a truck stop.
It's three acres.
Yes.
Okay, and they'll have two different, uh...
Separate island, yes.
Separate islands, okay.
They, um, just for reference, Sam did mention that he is going to be applying for this in his original, uh, presentation to the council.
Do you know if Mr. Graham has any, uh, gaming licenses at other facilities in the state?
I don't know that answer. He owns a lot of gas stations, so I would imagine he does. Yeah.
But they're...
Fueling stations.
I don't know if he has any truck stops. I mean, I know a couple of his look there.
I think he owns two hundred and one down toward Chicago.
And their truck... Their truck stops. Okay, I would like to hear...
From the first time we met with him, that was... This was his plan. Right, that was one of the reasons why they actually did the land swap with District fifteen, to make that property eligible, uh, for gaming.
And if I may just, you know, to follow Alderman Glad, it's... It's either... In my mind, it... Yeah, exactly. It's either, you know, this is approved, then you're standing, Graham's going to come through and then should be approved, or we deny this and we follow suit with, uh, with Graham's. And we'll hear the thoughts of the other council members. Thank you.
Alderman Miller?
Thank you. Um, I wasn't as concerned about the Thornton's as I was about the Harbor moving forward. But it appears if you're not a truck stop, you're still good with saying our ordinance would prohibit that because you're not a class A or B liquor license holder. Correct, Monty?
So, that's correct right now. The truck stops can have a class C license.
Right.
All of our other gas stations have a C license. So, for them to be eligible, you'd have to give them an A or a B, or we'd have to make another pouring type license to give those gas stations the proper liquor license to have them do video gaming. Just can't qualify right now. They could have wanted them to by giving a different type of liquor license, but right now, they all have Cs. Thornton's has a C, but Thornton's qualifies since they're a truck stop. So, right now, they're not eligible, right now, because of their license. I'm not trying to talk you into anything, I'm just to let you... Give you this, let you know what it is, is the facts.
No, I just... I worry about the after effect, as your memo says. And I'm also concerned that in the county, which is all around us, you can just be a regular gas station and have video gaming. And not that I want to see it in every gas station because that's not who we are, but... Or not who I am, can't speak for anyone else, but if everybody else allows it, I just struggle with that. Yeah.
Go ahead. Uh, I just want to mention, um, that the state is where this requirement is from for truck stops. So, if the state doesn't consider your property a truck stop, the state will not give you a video gaming license. Alderman Glad?
Okay, for clarification, though, uh, what Alderman Miller was talking about, uh, as far as gas stations outside the city or whatever, uh, unless they're a truck stop, they don't qualify, and I don't think the county would give them a liquor pour. They have to have a pour license in order to get video gaming from the state, unless they are a truck stop. So, if they don't have a truck stop, am I right?
That's true. The county gave them a pouring license. The county gave them a liquor license, they don't let them pour.
Class A with our license.
Yeah.
Right.
So, like, we could...
We have no control.
No.
Right.
Now, you could say, put a table out there, and we could give our gas station the class C license if you wanted to. I'm not telling you to do that, but we could give our gas stations that ability by giving them a pour license. We just don't do that right now.
Yeah, and I don't...
No, I'm not... Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know the situation with the county of what the facility is that got the, uh, pour license. Uh, I don't think... Think of all our gas stations, I can't think anybody that would really be able to facilitate, uh, you know, properly, uh, a liquor license, uh, in a liquor system, so...
Well, they're probably... They're out of it.
Well, everybody would try to figure out a way. I guess the question I've got, uh, for, uh, Mr. Polarecki is, is, um, if a gas station would want to date a truck stop, where are we with our zoning as far as what's allowable?
Well, the majority of our gas stations in town don't meet the three acre minimum requirement. So, that's one of the big things, is you have to be a minimum takers. Well, if you take any of these fueling stations in town, and they, you know, they can't become a truck stop. Plus, they don't have the tanks to hold the amount of diesel. Those are ten thousand gallons of diesel a month, I think it is, that you're required to sell. Um, I just... I... No existing gas station within this limits, unless they bought a bunch of property around them, could become a truck stop by the state definition.
Yeah, and I ask that question because I don't want to see more developers coming in with gations, creating trucks, something too on the side of the town is just fine. I don't want to see them popping up everywhere. So, that's why I ask, where are we with our zoning on that?
So, if you recall, we had two speedways approved in town as well. One, uh, south of town on thirty-one, and then right across the street from this property, at Ringwood and one twenty. Both of those, uh, Doug, do you recall, they both were truck stops. They both did have gaming. They were approved for gaming in the original approvals, but Speedway has since, you know, shuttered their doors and gone away.
They were bought by...
Seven Eleven.
Correct.
Right.
So, I guess...
But those two, those two are still, I mean, and this is something that I was going to actually bring to council. If this trio, now that we've moved forward, this is another topic, but do we want to pull the conditional uses for those fueling stations? Because right now Speedway's approved across the street from Trio, and they could go in.
Correct. No, the only thing I'm getting at is, uh, is it a conditional use for a truck stop?
Fueling station is a conditional use.
Okay, so it's controlled by us, so... But the fueling station is controlled by us, but the size of acreage or whatever isn't. So, if they decided later to make it a truck stop, would we have any say in that? Other than approving a, you know, a legal permit?
I mean, if it had... It met all the criteria for the state, then they could become a truck stop, I guess. But there's no existing gas station right now in town that could do that.
So, nothing...
That I'm aware of.
Now, that doesn't mean, you know, with redevelopment or whatever, it doesn't happen. So, all I'm saying is maybe in the future, maybe we want to look at our ordinance, the zoning, as far as maybe making a truck stop a conditional use or whatever.
Well, they are.
They are. That's what I was asking.
Okay.
It would be. So, it has to us if they want to make it a truck stop.
It's a conditional use, and if they want to do buy land next to them and expand their gas station, that would be an expansion of their conditional use, so therefore would have to go through planning and zoning and and city council approval again.
Okay, so in other words, uh...
Correct.
We got it. We do conditional use for the gas station, but if they want to make it a truck stop later, they have to come back to us anyway. Okay, so we do have control on that, but it doesn't get on, and that would be my only reservation here, so...
Alderman Santee?
Thank you. Uh, I have no problem with this. Um, I would like to see no gas station sell alcohol. And that would be my preference, but, uh, it's considered a truck stop, and I think Thornton's pretty, um, you know, outstanding. I have no problem with this at all.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments by council? Alderman Glad?
Yeah, just the fact that this is... Because we talk about liquor licenses with gas stations, and, uh, the thought when we approved that years back was the fact that, let's face it, you have people that out in their backyards, they're celebrating a holiday, whatever, with their family. They've had a beer or two, and they get in their car, and they want to just pick up, you know, another six pack, twelve, twenty, whatever. Uh, isn't it better that they go to the neighborhood gas station, uh, to pick that up rather than, you know, someplace that's convenient, rather than driving all the way downtown in Tucatita or whatever? And that was kind of the thing when we approved those years back. So, I just wanted to bring that up, uh, so that we don't all of a sudden have a negative connotation about liquor licenses at, uh, gas stations.
Any other questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman McCloskey?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
No.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Batty?
No.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is six B is all marine rental agreement. Motion to, one, approve the revocable, uh, concession agreement at Miller Point Park with all marine rentals for a three-year term with an option of two-year extension, possibility of two additional years effective May first, two thousand twenty-four, upon expiration of the existing agreement, subject to the review and approval of the city attorney. And two, to pass an ordinance amending section four dash two dash six, subsec D seven, class G, limited service and package license of the city, uh, McHenry city code. I am looking for a motion to approve six B as presented. Alderman Miller?
I'll make that motion to approve six B as presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman McCloskey?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Open up for discussion by city council? Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, uh, a question I had is, at the present time, they have a packaged liquor license to sell, packaged beer and wine? Or is it packaged? And, uh, the intent, if I recall, was the fact that they could sell it to, uh, the boaters that would come in and, uh, who they were renting, you know, leasing their boats to. Um, however, drinking in, uh, Miller Park is not approved by ordinance, correct?
No, we allow that.
We do allow that?
In two thousand twenty-one, we allowed that, uh, by council action, uh, in their footprint.
Any, anytime, day or night, well, maybe not at night, it might be closed. I don't know whether we ever close that park. At any day of the week, uh, people can walk around and drink at Miller Park.
The class liquor license is limited to eleven AM to seven thirty PM, and it was designated as a council...
In a specific area, they...
In a specific area that they can drink in that area with their license. Correct.
Almost like a DC Cobb says their area, buddy, please.
Okay, and where is those lines that they go in and out of?
Well, now, we... There's a clearly dedicated triangle, but they're two, you know, defined by the two shipping containers. Before, it was a... Can I finish? There was a fifty by fifty lined own area that clearly was spelled out, and we talked about in the supplement. But that, obviously, has been redeveloped, and so, uh, line changed, but footprint's the same.
But how do we monitor that?
Well, you know, I guess that's the tough question. We don't have park rangers, our police aren't down there, um, as dedicated to just watch that. The same as any number, any other parameters that we have to deal with, whether it's speeding or whether it's somebody walking down the riverwalk with a drink. It happened, unfortunately, as we've heard, you know, in some recent discussions.
So, when we gave them the liquor license, that's when we approved triangle, as you call it?
Yes.
Okay, but it's nothing in here that specifically states anything about that triangle, as far as this agreement?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Correct.
So, yeah, part of this is amending that class G license, so that they don't have a class E, which is packaged. They have a class G, which we restricted them. They can do packaged, and at the time, they could serve beer and... They couldn't do, like, mixed drinks, it had to be beer and...
Beer and wine.
Yeah.
All packaged.
Yeah, so, well, this proposed ordinance, I can't see it because I'm online here, I can't pull it up. But it says they can do alcoholic liquor, which means they could do mixed drinks, but they still... I think the thing that is still not ordinance that says they have to be in that...
Yes.
Area, I can't... I can't see it right now.
They don't have just a regular packaged liquor license.
No, they have a special...
The B license finds the location and the hours of operation. They... That's what makes it special. It's a B license with the location defined as Miller Point Park, and the hours defined as eleven AM to seven thirty PM limitations on that license.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I'm not crazy about that idea, and, uh, I don't see any benefit of us going more than a one-year term at this point in time. Um, I would not get behind anything more than one year. Thank you.
Alderman Santee?
Okay. Bill, uh, the time slot for operating stays the same?
Correct.
Okay. Um, yeah, and this is giving them the, uh, the full liquor license, which I know, I know, uh, Michelle and Dylan are in the audience, but they expressed to me prior. So, this is also in this agreement, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then one thing, you know, goodbye Alderman Glad in regards to what it... You know, there's a footprint out there, yes. Uh, you know, you look at Buddies, you look at Jexels, you look at DC Cobbs, uh, you know, we're going to have a toast and roast opening up where, um, I mean, first and foremost, I got to believe it's on the owners, it's on the people that operate. Because if you step out of that boundary, you know, they, uh, because if it does require, you know, the chief or anybody from his staff to, you know, to, you know, get over there and explain it to them, then, you know, we could have a, you know, an issue down there. Uh, I can see, you know, that, I mean, I understand it. You know, it's definitely a requirement for the ownership. Um, I am concerned about three years. I, um, very concerned. I don't know... I don't know where they stand in regards to that. Um, and we have a proposal of a flat fee of five thousand dollars, uh, per year. And trying to kind of look at both sides here, is that, okay, it's a flat fee, we're getting a percentage. When we worked on that percentage of numbers that we've received, you know, was a lesser amount. I understand that. Um, the activity levels down there with, uh, the incubator businesses have been incredible, and I would think, uh, that, you know, everyone would agree with that. Um, and it's... I guess I'm having a very tough time in being comfortable with three years, and I don't know, um, I don't know if Michelle or Dylan want to speak up on that, but I do have some concerns there. I have some slight concerns about the five thousand dollars. I think they're seeing growth, and but... Once again, aside, they went through the tough times. I mean, the build out, you know, kind of expanding, kind of moving, you know, there were some moving parts there. You know, I have a couple of thoughts, but not directed towards this issue tonight. Those concerns, I think I'll pass on to you at a later date and have a discussion with Michelle and Dylan. So, that's where I'm at. Um, I would... I'm comfortable with one year. I would like to revisit this. I would like to sit down, and it's a lot of moving parts down there, and I want to make sure that we're proactive instead of reactive to what's going on out, you know, what's going on there. And don't get me wrong, it's ninety-five percent positive. It's just that I don't want to say we have to control it, but we should try to be as proactive as possible and make sure that we're, you know, we're covering all of our bases. We're covering our bases for people who are just want to take the stroller and roam down there. We're covering our bases for people that show up from Mundeline and, hey, this is great. I can sit next to a river and have a cocktail and move on to my destination. Next, you know, fantastic. So, I... And I just want to be proactive on it. I want to... I want to try to, you know, make sure we have this, uh, you know, as much as we can cover our bases in the future, and I think the way we do that is that we sit down, depending on what happens here tonight, sit down in November or whatever, after the year, say, hey, okay, here's what happened. You know, here's maybe some good things, here's some bad things. Talk to the ownership, what do you think? What can we do to make it better? How do we... If there is a problem or an issue, we solve it. I think there's always those opportunities, though. There's even a rubber clause in the license, if there's issues, we can end that. We can give them notice and say, this is not working. It's built into the, you know, the license itself, into the agreement. Um, you know, from my side, we modeled it off of that initial agreement, which was a three-year agreement. Uh, obviously, we lost over a year, um, so then we came to council in two thousand twenty-one and added that year on, which has brought us to where we're at today. So, and from my side, it's been a good partner from the Works Department, um, where they reinvested in us as well. They've done things like sponsor fireworks for two thousand dollars. They opened up during Shamrock the Fox under our liquor license and give us all the profits. That's amounted to thirteen dot, thirteen hundred one year and nineteen hundred another year that added in what we're doing at no charge to us. They incur the cost of the labor and the manpower down there to be able to open that, but they're a partner, and they've come back and done that with us. Um, you know, as much as we've had an investment on our side, now, they can speak that, you can... That's why they're here, is up and do that. But as much as we've had an investment in the park, they've also, as a private business, have had that investment in their, uh, facilities on there, both the boats, the paddle boards, even the shipping containers are probably at least seventy-five thousand dollars each for those shipping containers. Um, and but again, I refer that to Dylan and Michelle, but they've been good partners. And so, if you're looking for justification, my side, as the person who wrote the supplement, um, the initial one was three years, I modeled it up after that. Um, went with three years again because they've been good partners. And but there's always those opportunities to address those things on a yearly basis. I think we've continued to do that and try to do that every year. Sorry, go on. No, I appreciate the answer. Um, I just... I just would say to you then, it's... If, you know, three year gets approved, understand what you just said in regards to, hey, the issue is a problem, now we kind of, you know, immediately like cut bait and done. Now, we're kind of grasping at straws, moving on and fly. Do we... If something does happen, how do we approach that next? If, you know, if, you know, do the worst-case scenario? What do we do? And then how, you know, who replaces them, and how do we move forward with maybe continuing? I'll be honest, what's going on there, if that should happen?
The agreement plans for the separation, which is the important thing that we're, that we're protecting. Um, to say where we go from here, we tried to get to here for twenty years to have a boat rental business, uh, uh, on, you know, that we looked at Walsh Park, and we looked at where, you know, Webber's Park, wherever we could find a spot to do that, um, we even had some local businessmen that were in and exploited and opted not to do it, um, it just wasn't, they didn't want to incur the insurance, um, they didn't want to take on that liability, and it now became a reality, uh, for us in those locations. Um, so if they picked up shop tomorrow and said, we're, we're done, they take their shipping containers with them, that's their property, and we're stuck with a couple of stubs that stick out of the ground and figure out the next person that's willing to invest that hundred and fifty thousand dollars in infrastructure for their private business in, in a location, um, to be, and whatever, whatever it looks like, it might not be shipping containers, it might be something else, but they have to come up with some structure, or we have to decide to invest in a different structure to be able to house a business that, or either for us to operate or for somebody else to come in and operate.
That's, kind of like, I mean, that's the point, is that I, I don't see, I, I don't want to see that scenario happen, and I, I prefer to, you know, to have an agreement and, and this is, this is a step up, they are looking at getting, you know, they're going to be offering more options there at, at the bar, and focus here on this agreement is for, like, the rental, but, you know, the key things are, okay, the three years, but, but in my, in my mind, the full liquor and the, and the three years, uh, and they've been excellent partners, okay, I'll agree to that, I, you know, I don't, good, tell me, you know, I, I just, I, my, my concern is, is that it, it's, it's a step up, I, you know, it's, it's, it's three years.
To be able to throw, I completely acknowledge that, um, in the same way that we, they hope, we hope we succeed down at Miller Point in what we've created, whether that's through entertainment or events or the tiny shops, we need to give them an opportunity to also be a part of that success and hopefully grow with us like they have up to this point. This will be the first true year that they've gotten with upper fits finished, um, you know, arguably, the really years that they've gotten was twenty-one and twenty-two, obviously, all of last year was under construction as we developed the park, and so that wasn't, the park wasn't visible until, until September, so they did have twenty-year, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, were two seasons that they had in, um, in some form or fashion, operating basically under the same parameters that you're seeing here.
Randy, go ahead.
Just to address the term of the contract, there is a termination clause in there, so either party can terminate after thirty days, so I don't think that the three-year versus one-year issue is, is too big of an issue.
And I, I understand what you're saying, I'm sorry, but I just, okay, thirty, thirty days, yeah, we can terminate, but, you know, if, if it should happen, that scenario should happen, then what happens on day thirty-one, we're sitting with nothing, what are we going to do? You know, that's my concern there, is that, I guess, if that could, Randy, that could happen year one, year two, year three, right? Um, I would love to hear from other council members, thank you.
Alderman Miller?
Thank you, obviously, I support it since I made the motion, um, but I struggled all day on this, and I didn't struggle because it's Dylan and Michelle or it's all marine rental, I struggled with, is that what we want, is that what we want there? And at the end of rereading the agreement numerous times, understanding we had a thirty-day termination at a period in time, and understanding the logic that we're comparing them to the mini shops and the rent, the chambers getting, we don't get any of that rent, but literally, they're just renting the ground space from us, they're renting that ability to put their containers and their equipment there, so it's really a ground lease that we're providing to them. I felt that the value was fair and the fact that we had a termination provision for no cause in the agreement. We also are obviously providing them a liquor license, which at any time, our liquor commissioner can revoke. So, I believe that Dylan and Michelle are doing this extraordinarily well, I have participated with offerings at events, I think they provide a source that we couldn't provide down there right now as a city, um, although she's on board, and she's run a beer garden, so that might change. Um, but I, I think they do a good job and I'm willing to support that and give them an opportunity to have a full opportunity for their business under this agreement, because that's really what we're offering them. The first time for them to say, okay, we're done under construction, we're moved into a permanent space, we're not going to get moved again, we're going to expand our business a little bit farther and, and stretch our comfort zone and still offer their base of, here's boats to rent and a landing spot for people to come to, so I could...
I think one thing I'll just add to that as a reminder is they pay for that liquor license, so five thousand dollars for rent and another thirteen hundred dollars for that license, that doesn't come with it in addition, so sixty-three hundred dollars annually just for rent and use of that space.
Alvin.
So, I appreciate everybody's comments and concerns, and I echo a lot of them as well. As Alderman Miller said, I struggle with not the, not what's in the park, but being financially responsible to the city as well. We're looking at increasing their rent price or their, or their lease price on, on this particular piece of land, and to echo Alderman's sanity, it's not about the exit or, or having to get rid of them, but for me, it's more of what are we doing financially for the city? This will be the first year that they have a full, beautiful new park, restrooms, an amazing space that they're going to get utilized. So for me, I sent this chair for the, and I need to feel like we're doing the best for our constituents as well, and for me, that's how do we do that, providing them a place to be profitable and continue to invest in what we're doing out there, but also bringing revenue into the city. So for me, it's, I would like to see a one-year so that we can regroup on that at the end of the year and decide what that looks like moving forward as far as that rent price. We don't know what's going to happen in the park this year, this is all new, so I have a little bit of a concern in that for me of, of just that fiscal responsibility, sign three-year deal at five thousand dollars sounds great because it's more than we were forgetting, but what is the value now in that park? We're going to know at the end of this first year. So for me, I would, I would love to see a regroup at the end of that first year to say, okay, reanalyze what that looks like and see where that is.
Thank you. Dylan, Michelle, if you at any point want to speak on behalf of any of this, or you want to wait till everyone, no, that's, that's, sounds good. Alderman Glad, go ahead.
Okay. Um, another part of the agreement, uh, is an exclusive, which means nobody else is allowed in the park, uh, I don't see why we would have to make an exclusive over there. It kind of takes away from, uh, capitalism as far as good competition. Uh, I'm sure there are other business owners in town that, uh, would love to open up an establishment there, and I'm not saying that we just open it up to everybody and anybody, but, uh, if you put an exclusive in there, then you are checking the doors of, uh, opportunities that could possibly come. So I think, uh, we need to take the exclusive out of there. Um, also, uh, I look at, uh, Bill, you're talking about a triangle, where did that come from, from the last agreement, did you say?
When we created the construction, we created the footprint with a triangle, set aside for them. It was easier, more easily definable in the last arrangement, but it was just a limestone, it was crushed limestone and a fifty-by-fifty pad, which is where they, where we refined them to. The triangle basically occupies the same amount...
The question I had was, is it, it was created in the last agreement, correct?
In the last agreement of fifty-by...
Okay, so the, the last agreement is expiring, and there is nothing in this agreement about a triangle, so we need to put that into this agreement because it's not in there. So we give them the liquor license for, but they can't go anywhere, they can't drink there, so let's, the, we need to put that language in there as far as the triangle.
It's going back, it would be back to this is a turning way, so we can definitely add that.
But you understand what I'm saying, I mean...
You do know.
You know, let's just make sure everything's ironed out right so that we don't wind up with, uh, problems down the road.
No problem.
Um, somebody complains about, uh, somebody being five feet away from them, and what are we going to tell them? Well, it's in the agreement, and then somebody takes away the agreement and finds, no, there's nothing in the agreement about it, so let's just make sure that it's all ironed out and that it's in there the way it's supposed to be. And that's why we have them at city council discussions, to make sure that everything is covered. You know, the more people that look at things, uh, the more that nothing is skipped, so hopefully.
So we can make sure we get a drawing of some sort also, and Randy and David can work on this, uh, passes.
I think that would be a good idea, absolutely.
Alderman Bassi?
Just a real question, um, we're going to the triangle, which I think is a really good idea, will there be signs saying, no liquor beyond this point?
We have had signs, and that's, and that would be something we'd look to do as well, again.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
Alderman. Uh, a couple things, oh, the footprint, yeah, that's key, I mean, our, our legal people will look at that and make sure, but you got to understand, anybody who's got an outdoor facility, you know, what if they had chairs, or what if they had, you know, tables, you know, now they're changing their footprint, um, you know, with, with the capacity, so, or if they're, if they, if they move their, you know, their area because they're redoing the patio, boy, that, that's an, that's an ongoing, and, and, and that's, that's on the ownership, that's on the ownership of every place that's got the outdoor, they keep an eye on it, they got to make sure that, that their customers are staying within those parameters, and if they don't, then we do have a problem. So, you know, that, that, that is key, but I know they're all, well, I'm hoping that all the other restaurants that have patios have that, are trying, I firmly believe they are. Um, let's, if you don't mind, let's just do a quick history lesson, Bill. Um, when this concept was came up...
Which time?
When it reached to looking at, at, do, at, at, at an outdoor, uh, liquor establishment in the park, when we first discussed, um, was there not or, uh, uh, an influx of bar restaurant owners that were, I don't know, mild lips out with it maybe when it first was originally discussed, you know, just when it first came up, right?
There was, yes, there was, it was a, of a challenge to prove...
When, and I think some of the elected officials and, and yourself included, went up to those establishments to say, okay, what do you want to do? Would you be interested in running it? And I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, once they found out that, now their staff, now their product, now there's things that have to build out, um, maybe we'll pass now, where, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, were there any establishments in town once they knew that now they had to hire more people, now they had to build out something on our property? Am I right?
No, that's what I remember. That we're in April of, probably, you know, March, April of, come right on, went out of Shamrock the Fox, but twenty twenty-one, when we reopened it, and this concept was put out there, when people heard that this is what we're going to do to expand on that, there was definitely concerns, um, but nobody, they loved the idea, but they don't want to do it. We have a proprietor that has taken the ball and kind of rummaged it on both sides of it to continue to try to build their business in.
One more, I'm sorry, one more question.
The last one.
Sorry, 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 no, no, I'm just running it off, well, okay, so, I mean, we're fine year one, we're going into year two, um, does this come to us as anything if everything went per ton year one? I mean, we're not, we're not passing this as a consent agenda item a year from now? Or are we...
If it's a three-year lease, you wouldn't see it until twenty twenty-seven.
Unless we want to see it, because there's a reason for it.
Correct.
Sorry, I just want to...
Annual licenses.
I want to, uh, annual licenses is right. Is it given? Yes, I, I, okay.
We could add something to the agreement if you wanted it, like an annual review.
An annual review come to council, kind of have that discussion, I think I'd be okay with that.
An annual review built in, do you grant?
There is.
There is, um, but I believe that is for Bill.
Mm-hmm, it is.
To have an annual review, um...
Correct, yes.
We could certainly...
Make it to come to council once a year to, for the session.
Are, sorry, are we, are we, um, I, stuck's a terrible word, I'm serious, but we're committed to that particular rent, the five thousand, right? We don't get to say, like, I would like to take a poll, how many people want one-year lease and then reevaluate it, you know, is five thousand an appropriate amount? Is it too low, is it too high, and go from there, because again, like we've been saying, this is the first year where the park will be completed, so five thousand could be way too high or could way too low. So I think if we did a one year, then we would have an opportunity to reevaluate it. So is it possible just to take a little poll of the council to see who wants a one-year?
And the only thing, I just wanted to caution you on a little bit, is I guess the flat fee, it, similar to the marina, we had this question about the marina, moving from a flat fee, right now, it's built in as three point five percent of their gross profits, and so, we're, we're in there, but at a flat fee, it's the eyeball test, like you did great, we think you did great, we should increase this, but we, we're not in their, in their books anymore to know, well, here's what you made, or open up and show us, you made this amount. That does, it does change that, it'll become as an eyeball test more, I feel like, and Randy, you may, tell me if I'm wrong on that, but if we go to that flat fee, we don't have that right, or shouldn't be saying, show us your books to show us what you made, we wouldn't go to any other business and say, show us what you made, we're going to increase your rent. Looks like you did great, like, we were down there on Shamrock and you killed it and did awesome, so we should increase your rent. That's, that's, that's my only caution of, so we all know what we're discussing.
And something I'd like to just say, like, everyone, you know, I think everyone assumes a business makes money, um, that's not the case, um, there's times where I have seen in the last three years of them being down there paying employees when no one's even out, um, or during the week, or the weather, and they're still paying employees, they're still, you know, whatever the case may be, so just because they have a business on Miller Point doesn't mean it's a hundred percent profitable, is all I'm saying, you know, I mean, there's a lot of costs that go into it, business owners that are on council should know that, um, but, you know, there's, there's more that goes into it, and Dylan and Michelle can, you know, speak on behalf of that, I think it's just important that, you know, the amount, to me, isn't as important as the partnership, but also, I understand the council, I mean, it's the same thing with the boat, uh, with the land and renting, I mean, if you remember that, those that were on this council, um, you know, we, we did make it work, and, and it was successful for them, it's successful for us, and I think that's what we want here, it's not, you know, they're not trying to pay, you know, five thousand and they're going to hopefully make two hundred thousand, I mean, let's say that's not going to be the case. Um, but I've seen many times where the place, they're still there and dedicate even though they had people downtown, so, or on Miller Point, I'm just wanted to say that.
And I, I, Alvin, I really appreciate your comment of you're, you sit in that seat to represent us, and I think that's the same, well, that's the same feeling as I sit in this seat to represent the city first and foremost, and our interests and the interests of the park, um, and then we'll bring things forward for you to, to make that decision on, but I don't want, I want to be very clear about my interests, lie is why, they've been great partners, um, and I appreciate that and love dealing with people like that, similar to our leases, but first and foremost, my responsibility and my heart is with, in this chair, with the city and with our parks department.
Alderman Glad.
Yeah. They are not a rich foundation, in other words, not a charity, and, and if they didn't think they were going to make money here, they wouldn't keep coming back, now, whether they've made money or not, uh, but they must feel that there's some potential to make money, otherwise they wouldn't keep coming back. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that, and then I wanted to ask about, uh, there's music in the park, bands on weekends, correct?
There are.
And who provides...
By the proprietor.
And they provide that, is that within the triangle?
It is not, it's invisible.
Exactly, so, the problem winds up is if you have bands over there, is that not going to attract the people that were drinking? the people that were drinking over to the end?
So the concerts are actually put on by the McHenry Riverwalk Foundation.
Sorry, by?
McHenry Riverwalk Foundation.
Okay.
Um, they're the ones that organize the bands. Michelle sits on that board, Michelle and Dylan both sit on that board, uh, and volunteer their time to organize those bands. Uh, but that's put on by the McHenry Riverwalk Foundation. They solicit donors for, um, for the Music Sundays. We did not have any of those last year, but we did have those for the first time in 2022. So it only had one year of music in the park on Sundays from one to four.
Yeah. Again, uh, I'm, I still, still feel like Alderman Bassi wanted to see a poll on the, on the one-year term, see if everybody stands with that.
Alderman Sandy?
Yeah, I apologize for giving up so much time to the council. Uh, I, I would, I would be comfortable with the three-year if we just could write in just a consent agenda item once a year to just, just have that, um, in it. So at least we see it. And if that does bring up some concerns that council members may have at that time, we can, we can pull it and approach at that time. Could be a money thing, could be a concern that maybe we had, uh, out there. Um, and, and I, you know, I apologize to Michelle and Dylan, you know, I'm, I'm one of your biggest fans. I just want to make sure it's best for the city as a whole. And I just want to cover my bases, you know, be willing to go, you know, three-year if we see it once a year in case there may be, they might come to us and say, we had a bad year. I, I don't think we can cover the five next year. That could happen. So it, it goes both ways, cut both ways here. So, you know, and so I'd like to have, I know Brandy's making something, I hope that's, that's not a problem. Thank you.
Alderman Bassi?
Thank you. Uh, with that consent formula we're talking about every year, uh, Chief, could maybe have a report narrative just to see if there's any incidents down there?
Yeah, I can just speak for the last couple of years. We've had no incidents with them or alcohol involved in their footprint. We have had the occasional incident of alcohol in the property, it was not for sale at their location. It was from somebody that walked off from other businesses or got off boats with alcohol.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman? Yeah, uh, maybe, uh, ask her attorney, uh, as far as where we're at with, uh, reviewing after a year as far as changing the rent. Because if we're doing a three-year with a two-year renewal afterwards, uh, we've already set, uh, the rent, uh, and if we review it in a year, then we can change the rent. Is that true? Do, I mean, why would you have a two-year contract if you're just going to renegotiate every year?
I, I agree. I mean, if you have a three-year contract with terms to renegotiate every year, it's essentially a one-year contract.
You're basically a one-year contract, so.
Yeah, I don't think that was the intent though, was renegotiating the lease, at least not from what I heard. It was a one-year annual review.
Yeah. Well, I heard from another alderman that was felt that we need to reevaluate it for what's best for the city every year. And that's why I feel that it should be a yearly rather than a three-year.
The agreement can be amended. On, uh, 14-13, the very last line, there is a clause to be able to amend is if we both agree, uh, now, I'm not sure how people, someone wants to raise the rent, but that's the way business goes at times. Um, so there is a clause in there if we both say, no, we did extremely well, we're agreeing to raise this. And in 3.1, Alderman Miller, Alderman Miller had pointed out that that's the clause where the yearly review occurs also. Just to respond to Director Hobson as well and, and to Michelle and Dylan who are here in the crowd, this has nothing to do with you guys as purveyors of the park. I want to be really clear that we had no incidents, as the chief said, but just like we did with the, with the beers and the, and the boat storage in the remaining time we negotiated that as well. You know, again, we all sit in this chair to do what's best for the city. We want to help the purveyor, we want to make it successful, we want to do all of those things. And at the same time, we need to be fiscally responsible, which is always hard to do. It's hard to have those conversations about, I want to raise your rent when we don't know, but, but, but the, the option for this is tough because we have a brand facility that's going to get a lot of different activity than it's had in the past. So I'll get this as, I don't, we don't know what the value of that property is right now because we haven't had a successful year for them to have. I'm comfortable with the first year, $5,000. I'd love to see the ability for us to look at that though and say, what does that look like in the future? Because I don't, I think long-term, I'd just see what a one-year in the park looks like. But just respond to your comment was, I wasn't challenging that your direction, sitting in that chair is anything other than the best for the city. But again, we all have a role and we all have a responsibility. So thank you. Our other benefit that we do have actually, uh, that works to our advantage is the time shops. And so they're required to, uh, submit sales. And so we know what sales are occurring there and we know that what the chamber adjusts their rent. And that was, I think that was probably the reason where I set rent that I did $1,000 above. I mean, there's some, there is a premium to the services that are allowed to bribe in the park. And so with the chamber setting, their yearly, um, their yearly lease for each shop at $4,000, um, that's where I went with $5,000 for that. So if you, so the question of why, and if $5,000 was just picked out of a hat, it was based largely on what the chamber has done there. Um, you know, the hours are, hours are a little more limited for what Michelle and Dylan, um, both from a liquor license from 11:00 to 7:30, um, and they're more seasoned. The shops are heat and air conditioned. And so theoretically they could be open around, they're not. Um, and currently are only open Fridays, some are only open Friday, Saturday and Sunday. They have the ability to be open seven days a week if they're extremely well.
Alderman Miller?
So I, I respect that we're the decision makers, but I'd really like to hear from Dylan and Michelle and, and how you feel about what we've talked about. Um, because this obviously impacts you. So do, would you please comment? Thank you.
If you want to. Oh, sure. Right there is good. Two chairs.
Push the button.
Push the button right in the middle if you don't mind. Yeah. If you could put, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
So I guess this all started, you know, with, with an idea that I had some six-plus years ago. I saw a vacant piece of property and in my mind I had two phases. Phase one was to make a rental company, um, that people could afford, um, with unique designs, um, that I could grow. And phase two was to have a place where people could sit and relax after they were done and other people may stroll down because the Riverwalk, you know, was on maybe second, first or second phase by then. Um, there was nothing in the park at that time, just, uh, pea grass and some pavement. Um, I had to think that, um, us, uh, we sparked a little bit of energy in that area. Um, I took a concept that was in my head that had not, not been done, uh, in this area before. Um, and I ran with it. Uh, we built a, uh, the first container, uh, for the company. Um, then frantically built the second container. I think that one didn't show up. I mean, trying to run a marina and, uh, trying to get that done at the season, I think it didn't show up till like September.
End of August, last.
Yeah, I know. I was getting, yeah. Michelle was on me every day, when's it going to be done? When's it going to be done? And I have customers, you know, um, so, um, and we've tweaked those, uh, through the years to get them perfectly. I mean, they have hydraulic doors, they have, they're completely, my brother's been a building inspector for 25 years, so their electrical is on the code. Um, we've outfitted them with refrigeration systems. They have cameras, uh, all around them, they have leads all around them. Um, there's a, there's finally a company that's making a container that's somewhat comparable, not as nice as what I built. Um, I think they're selling for $107,000, but it doesn't even have a hydraulic door. They're, they're pistons that go up and nothing compared to what we built. So even this last year, bringing that container back to retrofit it because it used to be yellow, you know, another couple thousand dollars in paint, bringing it back, retrofitting those doors so they were hydraulic, you know, another $10,000, moving them around another $2,000. Um, retrofitting older boats with all brand new equipment and seats, $10,000 to $15,000 each. Um, you'd never know that yoga boards, uh, eight of them or 10 of them cost $1,000, um, for good ones. Uh, regular, uh, paddle boards were $10,000. Um, and I think one year we've been profitable. Uh, that was the year where we had, um, the Harvest Fest.
Late at night.
Light the night where we had a couple big events. Um, otherwise, you know, every other year, uh, I'd just been throwing money in because I could see that down the road that this was going to pay off. No business makes any first year, second year, third year. Um, but I could see that down the road that this was going to work. You know, talking with, um, with Bill and seeing the plans that they had and talking with Pat and I, I saw a future. So I, I stayed the course, you know, even though we were losing money, um, I'm fortunate enough that my marine business, uh, does very well. And, um, and there have been times where I, I do lose money in business. My grandfather taught me, um, very important lessons in life. He said, uh, you always do what you say you're going to do. He said, um, be prepared to lose money on a deal to make your customer happy and always be in a situation where you could go to a restaurant, and he called Cavern, uh, and never be afraid to walk in and see anybody, to keep your head held high. And, uh, he passed away about a year ago, was 96 years old, but he taught me most of what I know. And from bodywork to welding to engine work to, you know, everything from the ground up. And I'm proud to say that our marina is the highest rated marina in Lake and McHenry County. Um, from mostly our customer service and, and the stuff that we do out of, out of all marine services. Um, so now we're at the time where everything's come together, you know, the park's done, you know, I know Michelle works really hard on, on the music and, and the food trucks and she's got her list and she's always calling and, um, stresses out about all that stuff and trying to get, you know, if she can't find a donor, she just pays for it. Yeah, I, I mean, $5,000, fine. But if you add up the, the money that we're throwing in for donations, you know, to, to do Shamrock Fox for, for three days and that's $1,000. And fireworks, that's a couple thousand dollars. And the bands, I mean, it's not really $5,000. And the money that we pay now, Michelle's busy enough with some of the other things we actually hire. Uh, we have a person on staff that does all the work for the bands and does all the work for.
Expanded. So which costs more money?
Which costs.
More people, more money, right?
More. And I mean, my insurance bill for the marina, for the rentals and the bar, I mean, it's, it's over $50,000 a year just for the insurance. I mean, uh, most people in business that, you know, have 20-plus employees know what it costs to employ them and pay all the taxes and all of the things that go with it. And like, everyone sees what goes on down in that park when it's light the night. You know, yeah, it's busy and yeah, we make good money on light night, but we don't make money usually on most of the other days. You got two people working in the bar and it's a cloudy day and you make $200, you didn't make any money.
No.
So, um, we give a gross, uh, 3.5% of gross profit to you guys. And so even if we lose money, we give gross profit. So you can see what we make on gross, but not what we lose.
Right.
Um, so that's.
Well, and I think one thing that's really important to understand is, I know it's in line you covered and I know we're taking a lot of your time and I apologize for that, but this has been a journey. It's been one that we've really enjoyed. It's one that I think, I hope you all see has brought the community a lot of joy. Um, we're, we're really happy with that organic growth, excuse me, the organic growth. And, um, whether or not this park was going to be redone, we still saw this being a place that we enjoyed and thought was a great spot for the community. So, um, we were there long before those fans came in play and, and hoped to be there long, long after despite what were to happen in the park. And we understand, um, the park's great, it's beautiful. We're so grateful to be a part of that and I, but that's how we feel. We feel like we're a part of it with all of you. Um, and the very first year we started in 2020, the container was not there at the very start of the season because this was a grand, you know, it's a wonderful idea that we done, we hurried up and once we got approval, ran with it. And so we didn't get a full year in 2020. And then the next year was, at the very end of the season was when the bar came. And then we had construction. So, you know, we didn't have a full season with both spaces in operation except for 2023 ended early because we were open construction. So 2022 is when we ended early. 2023, we, we didn't have a season. So, um, we really didn't even get to hit the ground running. And so when we say it takes about three years for a business to really get their footing, this is kind of year one, it's like our first full year. So now to say, I think for me, I understand where you're coming from and we in no way, shape or form intend to take advantage of this amazing opportunity that we, we have this partnership with you, but.
We're happy to share the way.
We are happy to do that, but to say every year we're going to renegotiate and hey, we might double your rent or we might whatever. I don't know how we can effectively plan as business people if we don't know what we're against cost-wise. I, I mean, how many do we put in then if then like the second year, are we going to renegotiate every year? So we're, I mean, we're happy to of course contribute and, and, and share.
I want to make the, the best, just like everybody else does. I mean, I, I love it down there. It's, it's a unique piece of property that I think is one of the best, uh, on, on the lake. I mean, I, I grew up on the River, uh, Lower River, but, uh.
We're having a lot of fun.
We have a lot of people that come up and say, I should have done this. And I look and say, if you only knew the work that went into this, you would probably be thinking like.
All the time. That does happen all the time.
I should have built this. I'm like, hmm, you probably should.
So I don't know if that even fully answered your question, but in the contest, um, Mr. Sandy mentioned about a history lesson. There's a full history lesson for you on kind of where we came from and our vision and, uh, we just, we appreciate you all. We appreciate the support. We really feel that it's a great benefit to the community and we'd like to keep doing this. Uh, you don't have to worry about us being the ones who want to just pick up and leave you with the slab of, um, cement or nice bricklayer.
They rented to you.
But the, the point being, um, we're working hard. we're working hard and we're, we're doing what we think is a really good job. We, we haven't had complaints. We're happy about that. I think it's going very well and benefiting the community. And I just.
Michelle doesn't want to teach for another fifty years.
Does anyone have any questions for them? Thank you both.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry for.
Can you hit that center button again? Thank you. Right.
Hold on a minute.
It says in the term of this agreement, there will be a yearly performance review between concessionaire and the city. When you say the city, is that just you or is it, or is it the whole council here?
Typically that would be me as, as staff. As we designated a council review.
Yeah. So we can make it so it's a council review. That's, and that the council would like.
That's what I would like, you know, not to take nothing away from you, but.
Just so everyone's same patient on how they're doing, how, you know, recommendations to them as well. So I mean, so that'd be fine.
That'd be fine with me.
Yeah, but again, where are we as far as renegotiating a lease a year down the road? You know, Alderman brought that up, but I thought that's really a good point in fact, you know, maybe next year we ought to take an, um, review as far as what it, it worth. I mean, what do we got? Over three million dollars on that property now that we've invested? Between what, what we paid for the property, tear down, rebuild. I mean, just, just what we built was two point two, two point three million.
Yeah, roughly two point three construction and then.
So I mean, we got a couple of million dollars in that property. Oh, and then we're given an exclusive for, for this. I just to some extent, I mean, uh, we've got, they've been on it for several years, but we've also got businesses in town that are backing the city of McHenry for many years, you know, and the whole downtown area. So I, I don't like the exclusive. I don't like the idea of the three year. I think it should be a one year. As long as it's got to come back to council, why, why are we making it three years with a three year extension? I, it makes no sense. Do it a one year, let it come back and, uh, and then we review it. And then maybe we don't wait until three to four weeks before, uh, the, uh, the agreement's over. We should probably have like two and a half months before that we, that we review in it rather than so close. I mean, what are we looking at? May first? So we're looking at, uh, a month and a half, uh, going right into the season.
So another option is do, you know, just like any leases is a increase of a certain percentage. You know, I know it's not, once again, it's not going to be a lot of money, you know, it's a three percent or whatever the case may be a year, just like any lease. Um, if you have leases, that's usually the, the rate is every year it increases three percent. Um, I just, there's so many, so many outs and opportunities to get out of this contract. But as, as they stay, I mean, they're hiring employees, they're hiring a manager to handle it. I mean, how do they hire employees saying, well, it's a one year thing. I don't know what you're going to have next year. You know what I mean? Like, no one wants one year lease as a business owner. You want a five year, ten year, you know, twenty year. I mean, a lot of business have twenty year opportunities, you know, to stay in their building. So not that this is their building, but it's our space. So that, that's just my two cents.
Why would we do it? I mean, why would we, the review if, if, uh, if we're not going to change anything? We're just going to review it. You, you, I'm just saying, you know, we're, we're talking about, why bother to have a council to review?
Just to have that conversation, just to say, hey, what, how's it going?
We're not going to change anything, you know? We're locking ourselves in for three years with a three year renewal. Um, I don't think, uh, we would go through as far as if we felt the property was worth that much more that we'd want a higher rent. Uh, and we're not going to go through that for nickel and diamond, let's say for five hundred or some dollars or whatever. But, uh, again, I mean, you know, all the legal asks we have to go through and everything else. But we've, we've invested a lot of money into this property and, uh, I don't want to really give away anything, you know? And at five thousand, I, I just don't know, you know, where we're at with it.
How would you come back any year and say, okay, we want ten thousand? Like how are you basing it off of?
Well, that's a good question. What are we basing it off now? We're basing it off according to what was given to us is, you know, that it's a thousand dollars more than what the, um, retail shops are, are going for yearly. You know? But how much is that property worth of what the retail? Plus the idea of the retail shops is not to keep businesses there forever, but to make entrepreneurs so that they can move up. And I think, didn't you mention that Bill, that there's two already that, uh, that moved into brick and mortar buildings?
Three, four.
Four. See, so I mean, that, that project, and there's been a lot of criticism, criticism about building those things, but it's working. And if they could bring more entrepreneurs into the city, all the more important. So, but that's another, the topic, another date.
Right. You could go up to podium and hit the little middle button again.
Um, nothing against council or anything, but as a business and to stay viable, we are not interested in a one year. Uh, we have to have a three year plan planned out, uh, one year. Um, I'm already planning things three years in advance. I can't do a one year.
Great.
It, it's hard enough over at the other side and stuff like that. It's, like I said, staff and money and buying stuff to be set up and it's not viable.
Thank you.
Mayor, just real quick, before you sit down, would it be amenable to, uh, say a three year contract with, uh, where the rents are reviewed yearly that is put in a contract that way?
Yeah, I, like I said, I'm.
That I would have a problem.
We're all about, like, like I said, sharing the wealth. I'm not, if, if I make money, you guys make money. I, that's the way that it should go because.
It would address part of my.
It's just how you base it off of without touching books. I don't, I don't.
I can't.
But, you know what I mean? How do we determine? How does the council trust that you're saying the right thing? I mean, I'm just being honest because.
I mean, if you want open books. I mean, how we've done it pretty much before, um, you were forgetting a percentage of gross sales. I mean, and, and really you have the, the tax receipts. Know what we're making on sales. It's one person don't want to mess with this, the tax man.
Hold on, Miller, go ahead.
So, um, obviously I own several commercial properties. I have never written a one year lease for any of my businesses in them because for longevity purposes, they want to know where they're going to be and what they're going to spend. I typically write it with a five percent increase every year subject to review. I don't ask my tenants for their books, but we meet annually upon renewal. And if they have a heartburn, their increase, we terminate and renegotiate. So that is obviously a choice that we can make. And I spec completely you saying I'm not interested in the one year of the business. Most aren't because they can't plan. And every business I've worked with wants a five or greater year. Brandy, Suzanne, you can both probably speak to that. Because they want to know they're there, that we support them and the dollars and cents can be negotiated inside lease. And if the end of the year it goes up five percent, goes to fifty-two fifty next year. If that's too much not in their budget, both parties have the right to terminate with thirty's notice.
I know, but we don't, we don't want to take and terminate somebody and come back and, and renegotiate the price. You know what I mean? I wouldn't, I think that'd be totally unethical to, to terminate somebody's lease just so we could renegotiate the price.
And we wouldn't.
And the thing is, is you talk about building in a percentage, uh, every year. But the thing is, is you need, you need a solid base to know what that percentage is going to go up to every year. Because you may know as far as what the rents go into an area, this is something kind of, uh, you know, brand new and different than, uh, you know, what is, what is the, uh, the property worth? I mean, when you take a look at three million dollars, uh, in that property, what's it worth for its cost versus, uh, some, some commercial spaces? So I, like I said, you know, we don't know exactly what the base and that's why we want to review it every year as far as the amount, uh, of what the rent should be. It may, may, may come up next year or I don't know, you know, but at least we know we've, we've done due diligence to, uh, our actors as far as how we're doing things.
Hold on a sec.
Are you opposed to the five percent? I mean, is that, is that flat out? I, I get it, but if we're looking at, we've, we've collected twenty-eight hundred dollars thus far. If we move five and if, if the applicant is willing to get a five percent, I think I have a comfort level in that, knowing that if they come to us years from now and say, I can't do that rent. We're either going to terminate and go find someone else and we're going to know what the value is by someone else getting to the table. I'm not opposed to that for sure. I think that helps us in some way at least start at a baseline with an increase. We're only negotiating today, the first three years. The subsequent renewals will be negotiated. Does that track Brandy where we are now? The first three, the first three would be at whatever rate we come up with today. The subsequent would be at whatever we come to terms on. Are you, are you understanding it that way as well? The first three years is whatever it is. The subsequent renewal for the additional two would be negotiated.
I see.
I think the percentage is the best way. It's a normal lease. Like if you do a lease percentage, two percent, three percent, five percent, wherever the case may be.
Alderman Glabber, you, it would be comfortable for you knowing that we have a, a five cent increase annually? And if, if they agree to a five percent increase, that puts us two years in fifty-five hundred. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Well, yeah.
That, that addresses one of the concerns. Again, the being, uh, the exclusive has a problem for me too.
Alright, so there's a motion and a second table, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're good to go.
No, I just, I just have a real quick question and, and I'd actually like to ask our real, realty state people. Is five percent standard? Is that fair for everyone?
I don't think there's any standard, but I think you take in the big picture, the conversation. Um, it always is at risk that what if your tenant comes back and says, I don't have the sales to support that? And now you're opening the conversation of what can you support? What if they come back a year from now and go, it rained every Saturday, it rained every Sunday, we made no money. And we staffed that thing all year long and made no money. We don't want to pay you five thousand dollars.
Or floods.
That, that's the reality. So I use a standard five percent because that is typically greater than the expenses for landlord year and shows a forward direction in the lease.
Okay. Would you be comfortable with a five percent increase? It would be. Okay.
So we have a motion and a second on the what's presented though. So unless the, those two are going to change those motions.
I'll, my, I'll, my motion.
No, so there's some, uh, yes, I guess, yeah, we're going to make a new motion. The motion's going to include a five percent increase every year.
On the annual renewal.
On the annual renewal.
Subjective negotiation before the extension.
With an annual review to the council. Now what else did you write down that included?
The area where the alcohol is allowed.
Then an area, a footprint and we'll get that council as well. Drawing and so forth.
Agreeable?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Dylan. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Thank you, Michelle.
Afraid to ask this, but is there any other questions by the council? See none?
Clerk?
Uh, what's our expenses as far as the city on that property? As far as the area that they're using?
The area that they're using is.
Would you supply the pier first?
Is next to nothing, uh, concrete.
Next to nothing, uh. For their. Are you saying you don't, you pay your employees next to nothing? They work for the same.
Well, they pay their water bill. Uh, we don't, so they have a meter for each building. So there's water there. Um,
Is there not a cost?
Probably the electric is.
Those piers are yours, aren't they? I could be wrong. Those are their piers. Oh, they are their piers. They are not the city's. You don't put them in.
The floating piers?
Yeah.
No, we, we do put those in. Those are the city of those piers.
The city owns those piers.
They have, they have exclusive use.
Okay, alright. Okay. So there is a cost to that as well and we're in care of that. So, you know, I don't know what those things cost. You know, I haven't got a, not even a clink of.
For the floating pier?
Of what a pier would cost?
Twenty thousand for that.
Thousand only?
Structure.
Dead. Okay. Alright, I, I, how many hours does it take to put those things in?
We just floated around. We, they actually let us, uh, keep it at the marina.
They just slide it in and then.
Floated it corner into the bay and that's where it sits for the winter, quite honestly. So it's.
Thank you.
None.
Any other questions, comments by council? Opening up for the public, is there any public council? Come on, I'm just kidding. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
No.
Alderman Bassi.
Yes.
Alderman Stratt.
Yes.
Alderman Cook.
Yes.
Thank you, Colonel. Thank you, Michelle. You're doing. Appreciate it.
Alright, next item on the agenda is sixty Sheriff's Marine Unit Building. Uh, a motion to one, waive the competitive bidding process. Two, accept the proposal from S H Friend and Sons Incorporated in the amount of four hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-five cents for the construction of the Sheriff's Marine Unit Building at Miller, uh, Riverfront Park. And three, to approve a budget amendment to the Park's Developer Donations Fund. This is in the amount of forty, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-five cents. And Park's Developer Donations revenue in the amount of four hundred and one thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Director Hudson?
So we have, I'm happy to be at this point finally. We have talked about this for a long time, explored so many different options, including septic fields and wells and how this could potentially work. Uh, from a, since it was a great concept, concept, a partnership with, uh, the McHenry County Sheriff's Marine Unit, um, where they had their trailer, I believe was done by Stratton Lock and Dams at that point and ran into system issues over there. And worked with us for this particular location. Uh, they were able to move the trailer. They constructed the pier for their Sheriff's Marine Boats. Um, it's a great spot on the Upper River to be able to manage that to a home for their boats, a home for their marine unit. But they want a permanent home. The, the trailer cost, cost enough money. And so in order to do that, offered as part of the agreement to construct the building, we'll, we'll provide the part in the space. Uh, they will at their cost construct the building. Um, initially we had talked about a, us providing the water and sewer, uh, and electric to that property. Uh, those became through the course of all of this, those became, uh, kind of the cost prohibitive, we'll say. And so, um, we, that's when we poured the, uh, the septic field as well as the well and just we finally got to the point where we were able to identify some costs and bid the project. We bid it twice, uh, in September and October of twenty twenty-three. I'm sure you'll remember that. Those costs came back, one was close to a million dollars, the next one, even after we altered those plans, was still eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, again, almost all of this in its entirety falling upon the Sheriff's Marine Unit. Um, our, we kept our exposure in for fifty thousand dollars in providing those services. So we explored another concept after both, after we brought that to council, rejected both of those bids, uh, that went out. Our next concept was to use one that we just utilized Miller Point Park where we had, uh, a prefilling that we initially looked at. And I think that bathroom structure was hundred, just over six hundred thousand dollars to construct that. Um, we had got some prices on our own based on the, the concept of that building at Miller Point. And came back and it was two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars included in that Miller Point bid package. Um, and so we decided to try to explore that same option of, uh, for all intents and purposes, a design build. Where they would say, alright, here's the intent of what you're trying to do here. This is what we'll construct. Um, we worked with, uh, S Friend, um, who we have a, a good relationship with. He's the one that did that concept at Miller Point for us. He designed the building, took the Sheriff's Marine Unit and they signed off and yep, this meets all the needs. The only alteration on our side of things is we were from two public classrooms, uh, down to, down to one public. The only alteration on our side of things is we were from two public restroom rooms, uh, down to, down to one public restroom. Um, the other thing we gained was we were awarded a bid for Miller Point Park, to pave, Miller Riverfront Park, to pave that lot this year. Uh, but one of the requirements of that bid is we have to move the parking lot lights. If you've been down there, those lights are right in the center of the lot. They need to be moved to the outside of the lot. And so, while we have electricians mobilized, we included into the, into the price, uh, to be able to move those lights at the same time that all this construction is going on. So, that's included within the four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, um, as is a directional board for the sewer line. Um, and I think, I think those were the, the two big things, a well, the installation of a well for the water to service that. Um, and so, brought that, brought that back before for your consideration. Um, the Sheriff's Marine Unit or Sheriff's Department is very excited about this. This is acceptable to them. They're extremely happy with the price, uh, as it's nearly half of what, uh, what was presented to them originally through the bid process. So, we'll be happy to hear any questions and go from there. Well, thank you.
I'd like to put a motion to approve six C as presented. Go ahead.
I have a question. With, uh, let's see, four hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars, it comes out of the Park Developer Donation Fund?
Yes, only because we, so the, we have the contract with S H Friend, so we have the expenditure. All those expenditures, the four hundred and eleven, will be reimbursed by the sheriff. But our contract is with the, the city and S H Friend. Technically, it is our building. They're paying for it, but it's our building on our property, so we're paying for it to be built. They reimburse us.
Is there a timeline when they reimburse the city?
I don't remember.
I mean, is it, is it gonna be, uh, five monthly, or is it-
As we-
Or a little lump sum, because once it's completed, everything's working, the functions, all that? They sign over a check.
Excuse me, as we receive the, uh, as we receive those invoices, we'll pass those on to the county for payment. This says, just we would receive an invoice, we'll do the same thing, so that we would never be out that entire month. We wouldn't wait till the very end and say, all right, now we're gonna submit. We'll submit as we get them.
But it will go back into the Park Development?
Yes, yes.
Mayor? You have a motion?
Yeah, but I've got a couple of questions. Move that we approve the bid for, uh, to, uh, a, uh, S H Friend, and, uh, I, I'm excited about this. You can never have too much law enforcement in that area, so it's gonna be nice. Where, where exactly is this gonna be?
Hold on. Yeah, let's go, let's go for a second, and then we'll go back to you.
Okay.
Alderman-
I will get a motion.
Thank you.
Where, I looked through the, you know, the packet. I, where's it, where's it gonna be?
So, as you face the launch, you're looking out at the river and the launch, just off to the left-hand side, tucked in, there's a, uh, one, one remaining high spot on that whole property, and right in that corner right there, there's a, a dumpster pad where the, there's a dumpster, and a pool toilet sit right now. It'll be right, kinda sit back there.
So, it'll be right around the corner. Okay.
Any other questions? Alderman Bassi?
Do you have a render you could provide to us of what it looks like? 'Cause I didn't see anything like that. I had the same question. Where's the location? Um, if we've already got the bathrooms, which are really nice, by the way, at Miller Point, I feel very safe if I use them for clean, why do we need another bathroom?
This is Miller Riverfront Park, where the boat launch is at.
Okay.
South Charles Miller.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm sure you've walked there.
I probably have. Actually, I really did.
There's a nice, there's a nice worship path to connect the country, but, yeah?
Yeah, it's not real comfortable to walk in. Okay, I apologize for not being on the ball with that, but back to that, though. Do you have a sketch of what is gonna be possible?
I have a sketch and a floor plan that I, I can find and provide to you. I, at the, at this moment, if you try to find it, but, uh, I don't-
You can send it tomorrow.
Okay. If that's acceptable.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, go ahead.
So, you're gonna see the transit of all this money, you know, the payouts that a contractor or anything else like that, and make sure that, that, uh, county pays it in timely fashion? And all that money will be right back where it belongs, correct?
Right back where it belongs except for the fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I kinda figured that when it was forty-one thousand, or four hundred and eleven.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Let's see if I'll make sure, uh, if it makes you feel any better.
Alderman Miller?
S H Friend did our bathroom set. Veterans, too, right?
They, yes, they did. Yeah, yeah. I just think for a second.
Any other questions, comments? Take, stop it. All right, open up for public comment. Any public comment regarding this item? See none? Next council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Bassi?
No.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Miller? Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda, staff reports. Is there any new staff reports today besides, you know?
I have a question. I just wanna make sure. I think I know what you guys want, but I don't want to say the wrong thing when somebody calls me the first thing in the morning. So, no, they're closest to me. I have, I'm getting old. My vision's not good. So, a gas station qualifies as a truck stop endorsement. We'll let them come forward and let them come to you for approval, like, like west of town. But a current gas station that doesn't qualify for a truck stop endorsement, they only have a C license, not eligible right now. I'm gonna tell them, no, you only have a C license, you're not eligible, and we're not gonna give you the chance to get a different liquor license, right? No, just flat out, no, 'cause, okay. Just wanna make sure that majority of the council is okay on that.
I would think if anyone doesn't meet the state's truck stop list, there, there, that's an offer.
Right, we didn't all say that during that whole discussion. I wanna make sure I can tell people that, right? You don't, you're not eligible, and you're not getting a different license.
We're good.
Okay.
Well, wait. So, Ross said we have no gas stations that meet that three-acre requirement inside the city.
He's saying if a gas station wants to go, yeah, a current gas station wants a class A liquor license, a pouring license. Are we interested in having a pouring license?
Thank you, sorry.
No, right. All right.
Any, no other staff reports? We're good? Oh, Bill, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Just a, just a small reminder before we meet again, there'll be that St. Patrick's Day thing that happens in Kenrick. Uh, the sixteenth and seventeenth, so Shamrocks the Fox will be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Have you put a volunteer with the-
I have a volunteer this week today, um, and I can send it to all of council. I think I sent, Alderman Santee had reached out to me, and I had sent it to him. But I can send that to all of council and anybody that's interested in helping. I will never turn down help. Uh, just as a recap, the parade, the dying of the river, or the Shamrock Shuffle will be, excuse me, Friday night will just be the tent at Miller Point. Um, no open container at all that night, just the, just the, uh, enter tent and the tent. Saturday, we'll have the Sham Shuffle at eight AM, based out of East Campus. That's run by the Kiwanis Club. Uh, at ten AM, the river will be died. Pearl Street Bridge will be closed for a good viewing area, as well as other areas that belong, uh, the Fox River. The tent itself at Miller Point will open up at eleven AM, um, as will our open container at eleven AM from eleven to six PM. And the parade will happen also on Saturday. That will be at noon, uh, long up on Kane Avenue, proceeding down Green Street, um, ending basically at Vat Park as it's around, kind of the same route as yesterday's. And then on Sunday will be, once again, the entertainment and the tent at Miller Point, along with food trucks and open container, uh, from twelve PM to six PM, and a brief fireworks show at seven o'clock is usually when it's dark enough right to end the whole event. We're working on a couple of small details on, uh, on that site, so.
Shamrocks the Fox, we're two weeks away. He's ready. Um, getting there. Um, I have nothing this evening. City council comments? Alderman Strack?
Heard Dr. Hobson last year, and maybe this runs to the chief as well, and maybe director as well, I'm not sure. There was a massive amount of people on the pedestrian bridge last year for the dying of the river. What is our capacity there?
It was a lot.
It was a lot.
Uh, I-
I, I don't know that I could give you a tonnage, right, off topic. I could look it up, but I don't-
I'm concerned. I'm concerned that there was, there was an overabundance of people on the pedestrian bridge last year for the dying. I don't know how we manage it. I don't know how we deal with it, but I was certainly concerned. I turned around from that park and looked at that bridge and was like, oh, I don't know. Like, that was a concern for me. So, I just, I wanna throw it out there. I don't know what we can do about it now. I understand we're only a couple of weeks away. But if there's a way we can monitor it, don't-
Stand down the bridge.
Yeah, just go on our ops plan, and we'll make sure that we don't have too many people standing on the bridge.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Alderman, go ahead.
I just looked at the weather last year. For those of you who are down around here, it was not humid, and we all froze, and there was not enough green beverages available. This year, this year, it was snowing. This year is gonna be sixty, sixty-one, and fifty-nine. So, it's gonna be amazing.
Up to the last two years, so the year four was also freezing.
So, thank you in advance for providing the perfect weather for a green weekend.
We're was in charge of that. Thank you, yeah.
One, one more note about the parade is we will be shutting down parking from six AM till the parade's over, to the parade route, just in case you get any calls.
Alderman Glabber?
Yeah, I just wanna bring up the fact that, uh, I will, and you hear this from me every now and then, uh, we're gonna talk about concrete end, uh, I know the last time we discussed, uh, the driveway aprons, uh, Ross Baraki brought up the fact that, well, they wouldn't, the aprons wouldn't be there unless they serviced that particular property. Um, just for education, um, when the developer came in with plats, they platted the streets, they platted the sidewalks, and they dedicated it to the city of McHenry, and the city of McHenry accepted that dedication, therefore, they accepted the responsibility of that. And we need to step up and live up to our responsibilities. We need to find money to be able to do it. I, and I understand, public works is right now in a squeeze, that you don't have money, how do you do it? But we need to find that money down the road because it is our responsibility, all those bridges and sidewalks, because we did accept them when they were dedicated.
Brandy, can you have, um, Davis, and you look at?
What he said was, can you look at that?
Yeah, that's really what I ran out of, in case Davis is this. Um, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to, in less meetings minutes, Tim Mc with his fireworks for May fifth. I just didn't want it to be laid by lay side. Has to be the constituent in Ward Six, and I knew him, and I know him and his wife. I wanna kind of make sure that, uh, the council here gives him some leeway, I'm asking, so.
Huh?
I'm gonna have to read my email. Okay. It's on the two. Is it a, is it a done thing, kinda sorta?
It's on the eighteenth, for a vote.
It's coming back.
Okay. Thank you very much. I didn't want nobody to forget. Next time, I'll check my emails.
Was that the eighteenth? Yeah. All right, any others? Oh, adjourn, Alderman Santee? Listen to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Alderman Cook?
I'm second in motion.
Go ahead.
Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy? Alderman, Alderman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Strack?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.